Okay, we'll go ahead and start our meeting. I'll call the meeting the order. This is the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance, and then after that, we'll have Pastor Josh come forward for invocation. So if everyone please stand for those two items.
Let us pray. Father, I thank you so much today for all that you've done for each one of us, for giving us the life that we're able to live, and just how blessed we are to live in the area that we're in. I thank you for your grace, your forgiveness, and all that you've given to us as humankind. I pray that you'd give us direction and guidance and wisdom in all that's done in this meeting today. Thank you for all that's happening here, the many moving parts, and the people that are here and so talented to be able to make those decisions and move us forward together as a society and a community. I pray that you'd continue to bind us together in unity and the work in and through this area. We pray all this in your son's name. Amen.
Pastor Josh. Our next order of business will be a public hearing, and it's concerning amendments to multiple ordinances in the county of Haywood, North Carolina Code of Ordinances. I'm going to turn it over to Frank Queen to present that. So go ahead, Frank.
Good evening. We've got, it's a continuing part of the review and then adoption of our ordinances. We're getting ready to republish all of them in a new code at the end of the year. In the process, we're going through all of them, making little and big and mostly little changes to them that are reflective of, most of the time, they're reflective of legal changes that have occurred at the state level. There's a lot of changes that have to do with the names of things, either internally in the county, or we're going to talk about one in just a minute that has occurred at the state level. All we're trying to do is bring these ordinances up to date with the current language we use, the current statutes that are applying to them, and there's actually been very little change, and there's very little change in the ones that you see tonight that have to do with anything of substance. I'm glad to go with these in detail. I need to alert you to one change that we're going to need to make that's different from the text alteration that we have published. It has to do with the title. In the first one that's in your binder is Title Nine, Chapter Ninety-two, called Fire Prevention. Throughout the text of this, we were changing the reference to the State Building Code.
[inaudible]
Forget it. That's not the one where this is. It's over in the Building Regulations one, which is the fourth one down you've got, and that's called Building Regulations. If you go over there, you'll find that we had been referring to things like the Electrical Code and stuff like that. We were using an old title for these books, and we need to use the current title. So we're going to substitute in the one that we pass, the one that we codify, instead of the references like, I'm going to read what the reference that's in it now that we're going to change. The reference now is North Carolina State Building Code, Volume One, General Construction. We take that out, that's a wrong old reference. The new correct reference is going to be what Amy has already circulated to us, and which is something shorter than that. I think what it's, I think my memory is it's North Carolina State Building Code, period. I think that that's, yes, we don't refer to them by volumes anymore. This is the same thing that's going on over in Plumbing Code, HVAC Code, Accessibility Code, all of those places. We're taking out the references to the volumes and just referencing the code. And what that says is that the North Carolina, that our local folks are going to be administering the standard state building code. We have always done that. We've done it for decades. We just need to reference it by the correct title in our ordinance. Questions about that?
What we have here, it includes the volume. You're going to take that out. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Exactly. And I'll tell you that there's lots of little things here, there, and the other place, in the volumes that have been published for everybody to look at. None of them amount, frankly, to a hill of beans. But they all need to be changed to be correct for now.
Frank, will that have anything to do with where we're meeting on the Engineering Board, where we're changing those, the county's policies on that stuff? Will that have any effect on any of that?
It's not in, my recollection is it's not in any of the stuff that we're working on today. It might be, it might come up in, it might come up in one of the ones we do later, because we've got some big, heavy lifting to do a little later on. The Development Regulations, the stuff like that. We'll have to make sure that we're right on those changes when we do those. I don't think any of these have that in them.
That's not part of this batch, correct?
Okay. And some of the other changes are just, I mean, some of these things are kind of goofy. We have an ambulance service regulation, an ambulance operator franchise. We don't have an operator, ambulance operator franchise in Haywood County. We got a regulation for it. We just never had one.
Bunkin County does.
There you go.
Probably one's there, in case we do.
Yeah. Other stuff, the other topics that are in the public hearing are fire prevention, child safety zones, the ambulance service regulation franchise, building regulation, and farmland preservation. Again, no substantive change in any of these. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you had it come up from your looking at it.
I didn't have any, Frank. I'd looked through them, and it seemed to like boilerplate issues.
It is.
And just correcting old language into the new language. And like you said, the state statutes, I think in the last ten years, the statutes have changed quite a bit with, I guess, a new, a different ideology in Raleigh. So that's, you know, we've had to keep up with that, make sure that we're current. So I appreciate you taking a look at all these.
Well, you're going to see, as we go further into the year, we've already seen, we've already done like, I don't know, thirteen or fourteen of these. We're going to see some ones where it's going to take some real calories to get our ordinance in line with state changes, changes of titles, nomenclature, even some substantive changes for some of them that are just basically obsolete. We're working on helicopter sightseeing ordinance. Yeah, we got one of those.
I remember that was in the, what, nineties?
Yeah. We've never had a helicopter sightseeing service in Haywood County.
They were thinking about one.
They were thinking about it. That's right. And our ordinance essentially prohibited it. You can't do that. You can regulate it, but you can't prohibit a business that is legal. You cannot prohibit a business that is legal. You can regulate a business that's legal, but you cannot prohibit a business that's legal. And flying helicopters is legal. But again, we've never had one in Haywood County. But we're standing by with an ordinance in case anybody ever does bring one up. So there you go.
Does anybody have any questions for Frank?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Frank. Okay, would anyone from the public care to comment on any of these ordinances that we're looking at tonight? Okay, okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to our standard public comment. Would anyone care to address the board tonight? Okay, okay. Seeing no one, well, I'll close that portion, and we'll move on to constituent concerns. Does anyone have any constituent concerns tonight? Have you, no?
I had a couple of questions, and I've contacted the county staff about some internet service in some areas, or some questions about some of this new phase of funding, and people have asked me if they're going to be able to get service. Now, we're working on that, and I've talked, contacted some of the county staff. Also had a couple concerned citizens call about some farmland that has been sold, and, you know, questions concerning farmland preservation, so on and so forth. And these folks hate to see our farmland turned into apartment complexes, and they were concerned. But, you know, the short answer is, farmland preservation and conservation of their property is personal property rights. If these folks want to enter into the farmland preservation program, instead of selling their property, then those are options for those. And of course, always, if the property's for sale, if you're willing to buy it, and you can preserve it. But, you know, I've checked around the state, and with our current situation, you know, it is a personal property decision, you know, if you own that property, you know. You can, I encourage people to preserve their farmland, their heritage, if they can. But that program is available. We have that position staffed, and if people want to voluntarily enter into farmland preservation, and that is an option. So I think we addressed that question that came up. But other than that, I haven't had anything, Mr. Chairman, other than those two.
Just about the flood, the cleanup on the flood. And Bryant, if you don't care, maybe to give us the short update, all the bids are in, and we should be voting on that next month? Is that correct?
A lot of the bids are in, not all of the bids, especially the Phase Two, the more technical ones. Those will come later. But yeah, you should see a batch of bids to award at the first meeting in October.
Thank you.
Phase Two, just to continue on with Mr. Rogers, I've had questions about Phase Two. You know, some folks are wanting to be moved up. There's really no way to expedite that process. There's environmental studies and things going on right now before Phase Two takes effect. Is that correct?
Correct. Basically, we divided them up into those phases based on permitting, especially engineering work that has to be done that make those more complicated. So they're Phase Two. That doesn't mean that we aren't working on them. It's just that they're not ready for bid yet. But the Phase One is much easier. It's clearing and snagging to a large degree, not in the stream nearly as much, and certainly not doing any stabilization work, those first batch that you'll see next week, or in two weeks.
No, you're good. That's fine. I'm sure it's good information for the folks listening. Another question I had is, do you have a timeline, or do you have any information on the buyouts from mitigation standpoint? I've been asked a couple of times about how they're going to buy us out, so.
Met with Mr. Grassi a couple of weeks ago through EM. He's heading that project up for us, and there's a little bit of back and forth between the state. We don't have anything, but I'll have a report for him. Maybe I can ask him to come and give an update at that meeting on the, I guess it's the second.
That'd be perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I've had a couple of calls on the debris cleanup, too, and I had a lot of, the ones that I talked to were concerned about the timing of this, because, you know, they've got a lot of, a lot of these same people go on a lot of storm cleanups and stuff all over the country. And a lot of them are wanting to bid, but they're afraid it's going to coincide with the storm cleanups in these other states and stuff. And there's, a lot of them are sort of committed for both things, but now the time's getting so close together, you know, tying them together, that they're concerned about it. And even some of the big ones, you know, that do storm cleanups all over the country. And is that going to put us in a bind in any way?
We had a good number of bidders on the first round, so if that's a concern of the large, and we divided these into smaller groups to encourage smaller folks to be able to bid. I think we got a good sampling of bidders, so I don't see that. But as hurricane season gears up, that's always a potential. We were afraid of that when we were doing the emergency pickup under FEMA guidelines, because there were other storms. We were afraid we were going to lose some of those resources to Louisiana or Florida.
What about the one that's doing the site? What's the name of the one that's doing the site for the state?
SDR. They're managing the debris site for us. They've not voiced any concerns about being pulled.
They do a lot of.
They do a lot of work all over. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, one of the concerns I got was that they were sort of committed to do the storm work, and they were wondering if it was going to interfere with us getting that done at a certain time or anything.
I think, they haven't voiced that with us, so.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, hopefully that'll allow local bidders more options to bid and make it, you know, so that they can bid if the big guys don't, for sure. To me, that opens it up for our local guys. And I would say, I have noticed that the bidders need to make sure that they submit all documentation that they're asked to submit, because this is a state and federal contract, state or federal contract. We need to make sure that we follow that, because if we don't follow the procedures that they've put forth, it could be that the county doesn't get reimbursed for what we pay out. So we want to make sure that everybody that bids, make sure they submit the proper documentation, so we can consider their bids. And then, see, Tommy, on the conservation easements, you're right. They can do, Haywood Soil and Water has a conservation easement program, Southern Appalachian Highlands has a conservation program, and there are probably some more. So I deal with a lot of those in the work I do, and actually, we have to survey those conservation easements so that they're pinpointed exactly where they are. And that really has put a lot of farmland in conservation. In fact, if you want to go, if you ever want to know what is conserved in Haywood County, you can go to the Haywood County GIS, and there is a, when you go down the, I'm trying to think what, the layers, if you will, in the GIS, it'll have conservation easements, just like floodplains and topo, or whatever you want to turn on on the GIS maps. But you can turn on conservation easements, and it'll show you, and you can zoom out and see where all in the county those conservation easements are located. And then that way, if you're ever concerned about a property, you can look and see if it is a conservation easement real readily, without having to do deed research and do it that way. So that's a good way to find out about what's in your area, if you will. I know I've done some where the property owner has contacted me to subdivide their land, and come to find out, they were in a conservation easement, and they couldn't do that. And they didn't, I guess they didn't understand, or maybe it had been several years since they had done that, and maybe it had been handed down to another owner. So we've got to be kind of careful, because, you need to be careful, because if you subdivide that, it's going to be found in a title search, and then, you know, you may pay for a survey or even sell it to somebody and find out that they can't build on it, because it's in conservation easement. That's a great program, too, Tommy, so. Okay, so I'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations. And we have our Haywood County recycling update. We have our Administrative Officer Recycling Coordinator, Zonda Bryant. And I do want to mention that Zonda's been with the county since 2000, and she wears many different hats. I told Amy we needed to clone her, because we need lots of Zondras. But her true passion has been working on recycling education, which she's done since 2009. And through her efforts, Haywood County has eliminated four hundred and twenty-five blue bags with county-sponsored grants for recycling carts in all the towns, which I actually use one of those in Waynesville.
Yay!
And then last month, Zonda was recognized as a finalist for the Southeast Recycling Champion Award in the Public Entity category by the Southeast Recycling Development Council for her exceptional work in partnership between the county and the towns. Additionally, Haywood County is innovating by partnering with Haywood Community College on a recycling education pilot program, where college students teach local elementary schools about the importance of recycling. So congratulations, you know, Zonda, on being a finalist, and thank you for your efforts. And so I know you're here today to provide us with more information on that. And I remember when you were here a while back, and you educated me on some things that I didn't know about. So thanks for being here today, and go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So yes, we're going to do a little update on our public education and plastic bag reduction efforts in the county. And so we are going to start with how we got back into the schools after COVID. September of 2021, I got a phone call from Haywood Early College. The environmental biology teacher wanted me to come into the classroom and teach her students about recycling. So we did a partnership with the early college students as part of their leadership and community stewardship project. So I've been into their school. We have put together a program where the students themselves go into the elementary schools and teach the fifth graders how to do recycling for their school. So we went into Junealeska Elementary School to start with. We provided the blue cans for the cafeteria, and they chose the material that they wanted to focus on, which happened to be the milk carton and juice cartons. So our students went in. So our students went in, we did a presentation to their safety patrol, and they then partnered up with those fifth graders and created the banners that you see there. So each group made their own little banner and they have their own little friendly competition amongst their groups for who can collect the most in their set of classrooms. They're also doing a weigh program, which I'm hoping to get some information on as to actually how many cartons they have recycled. We did an estimate, it should be around 325,000 cartons in a school year per school if we can get those cartons recycled. Are, we are currently working on getting into North Canton Elementary School, Hazelwood Elementary School, Clyde Elementary School. And we will also have a booth at the fair where we will have our students there answering questions to the public for recycling. I am currently working with Shining Rock Classic Academy as well, outside of the HCC program. They, the STEM students there are putting together a recycling program there. They don't have a cafeteria, so they are doing classroom recycling. They are broken down into five groups. Each group of students will take a grade level and then they will have their own little competition that they are, they are dubbing that recycle wars between their groups to see who can recycle the most in their grade area. And up on the screen, you can see the different signage that we've put together. We are using the North Carolina Recycle Right Campaign material so that we use the same messaging that every other county in the state is using. No bags and, excuse me, what materials will go in the recycling. The table up on the right-hand side shows the display that we've put together. And then we have some games that are interactive where they can play bag toss with your trash and recycling. So we've got videos of that as well. And then we're going to move on to our towns recycling. We have four incorporated towns that have curbside pickup. And I've listed them up there as to what their population is and how many cans we have purchased for each of those. In your seats, you had a bag. If somebody wants to hold that up, those are the bags that we have purchased as part of our bag reduction program. So the front of the bag has what we would like you to put in there. So yes, we want those materials. And if you flip it around, it'll tell you, please, we don't want those materials. So no thank you for any of the materials that are on the back. So we are going to be handing out those bags. Those are going to be for our residents that are using convenience centers that do not have the curbside carts. So if you've got a curbside cart, we ask you to don't bag and put your materials directly in the cart. And then if you're using a convenience center, we are handing out the bags for you to be able to take those to the convenience center. And they fold up so nice and there's a handle on the bottom so that you don't drop it in the can. So part of our quest to reduce the plastic bag contamination came from the fact that we are using a outside MRF Materials Recovery Facility to process our materials. So all the materials go to curbside management and/or Sunoco in Asheville. They are automating their equipment so the bags actually tangle up in their, the beginning part of the stream. So the quest for us is to get rid of those bags and not cause a problem with that contamination. The pile there is what it looked like in 2014, right before we went to single stream. And we did bags before, and this is before we had any carts, so everything was required to be bagged. So how did we do that? We actually went to the state and said, can we have grant money? And we got it. So for every year that we applied for a grant, we were able to get funding to move forward with our bag reduction. So we started with the schools. In 2014, we were able to purchase eight-yard containers with the CWAR grant funds. Initially, we were using trailers. The top one is from Tuscola that we ended up turning on its side because they were collecting cardboard and paper in those trailers and it was side-heavy because they were collecting more cardboard than any other material. So that became an issue with the eight yards. Everything can go in that from the cafeteria, from your classroom, the cardboard, all goes in the eight yard and it gets picked up with a front loader. So it's much safer and they're not having to have people go into those trailers. Maggie Valley was the first town that we were able to purchase carts for. We applied for those cart funds in 2016 for our 2017 grant cycle. And we purchased 1,100 carts through that funding option. We estimated that we removed 71,000 bags that first year and we had an increase in recycling in the town of Maggie Valley of 59%. Canton and Clyde, we did together. Because Clyde is such a small town, it would not have been fiscally responsible for them to try to go into those carts by themselves. So combining that, we were able to actually get a cost reduction in the cost of carts. We got grant funding for that. We bought 1,900 carts for Canton and 565 carts for Clyde. And of course, we had education material that went in all of those carts. We had refrigerator magnets and flyers that showed the same messaging as what's on the bag as to what can go in there. And when they did a waste audit of those carts, it showed that there was a 15% contamination rate at the beginning with the carts. But once they were able to be educated a little bit, we actually dropped that down to a 5% contamination rate, which was actually quite phenomenal for contamination. Waynesville was our last municipality that we applied for. In addition to the CWAR funds from the state, we also got funds from the Recycling Partnership and from SARDIC, which is the Southeastern Recycling Development Council, for a total of, that was a lot of money, $267,000 was the project cost. We funded 53% of that with grant funding. And we were able to put cart tippers on those, their trucks as well so that we could easily pick up those carts. And we've estimated that we've reduced approximately 300,000 bags for the first year from Waynesville. And the recycling rate for Waynesville went up 53%. So that's a phenomenal number for our recycling funding. The state does a ranking every year. So it shows from when I started, around 2009, we don't have really good numbers for there. In '12, they changed how they did their calculations for recycling. They've split it up for total household recyclables, which is the stuff that goes in your carts. And then there's total recycling, which includes your scrap tires, scrap metal, and other large recycling items that don't go in your cart. So we've been pretty steady between '12 and '17 ranked in the state. With our poundage, we did take a dip in fiscal year '20 when COVID hit. But we are really pushing to get those numbers back up. So our state ranking fiscal year '20 for just the household recycling was 17th. For '21, we dropped to 12 or we went up to 12. And for fiscal 2022, which is the last reporting cycle, we have moved up into the tops 10 at number seven. So that's the highest we've been in the state ranking since I've been in solid waste. And I'm really proud that we're out there pushing our numbers and we'll see if we can get any higher. And if you have any questions?
Just a comment.
Sure.
I was looking at the items here for recycling and.
Yes.
Just for the benefit of the folks at home, Commissioner Rogers and I sat on the Solid Waste Committee and.
Yes.
This thing pays dividends on both ends. It reduces landfill space. These plastics, when you screw the lid on a plastic bottle and it goes to the landfill, some of that compaction equipment, it may or may not get squashed. I mean, it's just wasting landfill space.
Correct.
All these recyclables, you know, they, they help us. If you recycle, they help the county in the long run by extending the life of our landfill.
Correct.
Anybody that knows anything about landfills knows that it's a huge expense. It's a huge expense for county governments, regional governments, and anything we can do to extend the lifespan.
Absolutely.
Of those landfills, it's, it just really pays.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your work and everything you do for that.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Just comments, Zondra, we appreciate you and appreciate what you, what you do, getting that reward that Kevin mentioned earlier and what you do for the county.
I didn't get it.
You didn't?
I got nominated. I made it to the top two, but I didn't get it.
We think you should have got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Either way, you got nominated.
I did.
That's, that's a big accomplishment. And like I said, I think Commissioner Long and myself know what you do on a daily basis since we are on that solid waste board. But thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
The recycling information, as Commissioner Long said, saving what we can in the landfill goes a long way, so thank you.
Absolutely. Save this money all the way around.
Could we, could you say again where folks can get one of these bags?
They, I have them in my office. I will be handing them out at our booth at the fair, but I do have them in my office and we will be making rounds trying to get them out into the community as, as I'm able to get out and get out and about.
I just got a question, being as I'm new on the board. On that, the recycling, does it go through the recycling center right here or does it go through the county? Do we sell it or do they sell it or how does that work?
Most of the towns, when they pick up, they take it to our facility in Clyde, but then it does get transferred to curbside management and/or Sunoco in Asheville. And they do the actual processing. We don't do that processing in-house any longer since we've privatized those facilities.
Does the county, I mean, make anything off of it or does it just go to?
We pay, we pay to have that processed. You know, that's part of it, you know, that we pay to process it, but we're not paying to landfill it. So there is the benefit of not landfilling it because it does keep our landfill open for other things, so, but we do have to pay to process.
I didn't know because, you know, used to, different people picked it up, plastic people and then glass people and stuff like that.
Right.
I didn't know how it changed.
Right.
We thank you for taking care of all that.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to, I mean, I'm sorry. Zondra, I was going to say, I think you picked up in Stephen King's footsteps because Stephen really got us into the recycling kind of mode, if you will, and kind of miss him, but he's not with us anymore. But he did a great job in there and I can see how you've, he kind of got me started. I really didn't recycle a whole lot in a long, long, long time ago and I started recycling. And usually when I put my cart out, it has as much recyclables as is in the trash. And sometimes it's more in the recycle. So I think if we really pay attention, you know, you can do that. And really, I've noticed, you know, we want to get away from bags and I have noticed in the recycle bins at the convenience centers that people still throw in bags even though there's a big sign that says no bags. And I'm like, you know, why? And what I do is I have a big trash can and I have a plastic bag in it. And so when that gets full, I take a plastic bag out and I go to the recycle bin and I dump the plastic bag out and I go back. And I can probably use that plastic bag like 10 times or more.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Or I don't know how many times I, I just keep, you know, taking it back. So it keeps those bags out of the landfill.
Yes.
You know, and so I use it until it just gets so shredded, you know, I can't hold anything else. So, you know, people can do that and not have to buy a bag. Bags are expensive. If you go to the store, if you look at what you pay for trash bags, it's a lot.
They are very expensive.
And stuff, so. But, but anyway, and I wanted to just congratulate you because seventh in the state, correct?
Seventh in the state, out of 100 counties, yes.
Is recycling. So everybody, if I can do it, everybody can do it. Because believe me, it's not that hard.
It's not hard.
And it doesn't take, usually your recycles are a little bit lighter.
Absolutely.
So it's not heavy like the trash bag is. And you can, you know, they're easily, you know. And all you've got to do is just get a separate container to put your recyclables in and take it to the convenience.
And when we designed the bag, we designed it to make it to where it was easy to carry, enough for, you know, if, if we're, you have the people that are elderly, it's not very heavy, it's a lightweight bag. And it folds up in your car, it's much easier to carry than it would be a tote or anything else. So we did take that into consideration when we were, when we were designing it.
Okay. Well, that's a great, that's a great idea too. But thank you. And this has got on here, all that you can do, you know, on the bag.
And if you open.
It says what you can do.
Yes, please.
And then on the back, it says what you can't do.
No, thank you. And then if you open it up, if, I'm sorry, if you open it up on the sides.
Yeah, open it up.
It actually has our website listed. So.
So they can go to the website.
They can go to the website and I keep our website updated.
For more information, if they can get that on camera.
Absolutely. And then on the other side, it has our no-bagging.
Okay. Oh, the no-bagging, nobody pays attention?
Yep, that's our no-bagging, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to have the bag police at the convenience center, so.
Yeah, that's me.
But it just, it really helps if you, if you want to recycle, then don't put the bag in there because that's, that's gumming up the process and stuff, so. And the recycle, the recycle centers like it when they get, when they get a load that's not got a lot of bags and everything.
When they don't have a lot of bags, they can process it a lot faster than they can in having to pull those bags out. Because a lot of the stuff that's in a bag, it's going to go to the side, it's going to be considered contamination and they're not going to process it. And then there's, there's the additional cost of having to transport it back for landfilling. So, yeah, we really do want to get rid of those bags.
True. And it just makes, I want it to be where when they know a load's coming from Haywood County, they want that load, you know?
Absolutely.
And they're, and they're not like, they see a bunch of bags, it's like they send it back or something. Because then you're paying, like you said, you're paying for a lot to do all that. Anybody else have anything? Sorry, I kind of got into recycling several years ago and it's kind of fun, so. It's kind of weird.
That's great.
I'm kind of a weird guy sometimes. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Zondra. Okay, beyond the weirdness here, I'll get on to the consent agenda. Or rather, discussion or adjustment to the agenda. I do not have anything. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have 13 items. Are there any questions about any of those 13 items that we have there?
I did have a question. Somebody asked a question of me about item number 12 and I spoke to Brian about it. Do you, do you mind to just give us some clarity on that again publicly, just item number 12?
Sure. The, the, the two travel trailers, campers, we'd like to surplus those basically and give them to the Methodist. They've been instrumental here in helping after recovery of Tropical Storm Fred and housing folks. Down east, there were a couple of counties that were impacted by some, I believe it was some flooding. And the state actually bought these campers for us. And so we were asked through state EM if we were done with those, if we would be willing to provide those to the Methodist that are helping in the recovery down there. And so without a need for these, we felt like it was a good opportunity to transfer them to somebody else and help folks until they could get back in their own home.
So the question to me was, how was this nonprofit chosen? But it was really just the entity that will facilitate it for the state, I guess, is what I was, the point I was trying to.
I think that was, part of the hiccup was that the state EM folks realized there was a need and this was a quick way to get those two down east and get folks in there. It wasn't like we solicited this. The Methodist are down there working and had some folks they'd like to put in them.
Here and now, I guess I'll entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda. Here now, I guess I'll entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion, any other questions or anything? It's okay, no, you're good. I appreciate that, because I can't ask that until you give a second, so. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda, and we have, number one is to request approval for a purchase of a 2024 Freightliner Fire Engine Truck by Crusoe Fire Department in the amount of $541,905. Crusoe Fire Department has been awarded a USDA grant in the amount of $300,000, along with a match from Haywood EMC in the amount of $60,000. Crusoe Fire Department will contribute $65,240 towards the purchase, with the remainder of the balance of $116,665 being financed for a term of ten years at zero percent interest. We have Crusoe Fire Department Chief, Tim Hinson, you wanna come up and say anything, Tim? I wanna say congratulations on the grants.
Yeah.
And the matches, and.
Zero percent interest.
That's impressive.
And zero percent interest, so can I get you to maybe help me get some loans?
Actually, the USDA is funding the 116-665, that is also from USDA, that's a loan from them on top of the grant for 300,000. So both of those came back at zero percent interest for ten years, and.
So they're allowing you to make payments, basically just paying back what they gave you, so you can't beat that.
That's right. And we'll be making our payments to HEMC, they're kind of the middleman in this situation. They're the ones that brought us the information about this grant and loan process, and we just picked up the ball and went with it, and actually, we were approved for the grant, you know how it is when you apply for grants, you may or may not get it, but they approved the grant and the loan, so we were definitely tickled about that, so.
I know you guys have been through a lot lately, and this is a blessing for y'all because, if you might, deserves it, you guys.
Well, we're, we're a couple of years behind, obviously.
Yeah.
The flood set us back a couple of years, we were talking about this process prior to the flood, and then, you know, things happened, and we're just now getting back to where we can hopefully make that work, so.
Appreciate your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Tim, what's availability on those trucks? I mean, is that something you feel like you can get fairly quick, or? I know we're having issues getting vehicles, and I assume you probably are, too.
Well, we've already got the vendor picked out and spoke with them, and they've pretty much assured us by the end of next year we'd have this truck, possibly by summer of next year, but we're looking probably more toward the end of next year, but everything seems to be going pretty good with that, so.
We appreciate what you do, good partnership with Haywood EMC. Did you guys lose a truck in the floods?
Uh, no.
Or have one that was severely damaged?
Well, we, all of them obviously got water in them.
Got a lot of water.
But we didn't lose any whole trucks, just some equipment, so. This will be replacing a, a twenty-two-year-old, our first line engine is twenty-two years old, so this will be replacing it, we'll move it down to a second-line truck, so.
We'll say, you know, they did get some water, but you guys were supposed to be out of the flood area, because the map showed that where you were at, out of the flood areas, but you got flooded anyway.
We did.
Which I don't think I've ever seen that happen, but, so it wasn't like you weren't paying attention, if you will.
Right.
I mean, it just, it was just one of those, oh, wait, you know, once in a five-hundred-year flood.
Well, our substation on Old Michael Road, we knew it was, it's in the hundred-year flood, actually, the hundred and five-hundred years split the building in high, if ever how that happens, but, and our main station was not in the flood plain, but we were told when the maps were redrawn, there's a possibility that obviously we'll be in.
Yeah.
Maybe even the floodway, because of the closeness of the, you know, the road just separates the parking lot and the river, so we don't know how that's gonna turn out yet, so.
Well, hopefully, if you are, you can just elevate a little bit maybe or something, I would hope, yeah.
It's also obvious, Chief, that y'all contributing, what you, what you are, you've got a good board and a good fire department, I mean, because that's a good little chunk to, to, to put in yourself, so.
Right.
Sounds like you're running things right, we appreciate you doing that, you in the board.
We try.
You know, it definitely was almost a career-defining event for a lot of, for you, and I'm sure a lot of your folks up there.
Right.
And, and I hear in the community so much, I know Tommy and Brandon are from more up that way than I am, but just accolades for the fire department and leadership and folks that are, you know, on the roster up there, so.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate what y'all do.
I'm up there pretty regularly, I see things going on at the fire department all the time, and I know the community appreciates your service. We, we've approved a few fire trucks here recently, but none, none that's gonna be as easy, I guess, to approve as this because of grant, I mean, that is just a blessing right there to receive that, that kind of money upfront on a, on a, on a piece of equipment that's that expensive, so, you know, I know everybody just smiles from ear to ear because of the, the gift there that you received.
Uh, to be totally honest about it, that's not a, a complete gift grant, we'll have to pay that back.
Three hundred thousand?
They're calling it a grant, but that's, we'll, we'll have to pay that back.
The, the three hundred thousand?
That's right.
Oh, okay.
But it's still at zero percent, it and the loan are at zero percent for ten years.
So it's three hundred and one sixteen, two separate loans that are at zero percent?
The one sixteen is the loan, the three hundred is the grant.
Okay.
And that's what, that's USDA's terms, they call it a grant.
You don't have to pay three hundred thousand back.
To my knowledge, yes, we do.
It's not a grant, is it?
That's what they call it, I don't know.
Oh, they do? Oh.
Well, that casts a little different light on it. The way, the way it reads, I, I was mistaken, I'm glad you clarified that.
Well, I, I wanted to be upfront about it, but it's, down at the bottom, the total amount financed is what we're gonna owe at zero percent for ten years, the four seventy-six, six sixty-five.
So you guys are contributing sixty-five and some change.
Right.
Toward the purchase, and Haywood EMC gave you another sixty toward the purchase, right?
Well, yes, they, they didn't give it to us, but that comes, they have to pay, we have to pay that back, too. So HEMC is gonna collect the money once everything's said and done. Our payments, monthly payments, I was told that last week, will go to HEMC. I don't know how they're gonna get their sixty back out of that over an amount of time, I'm sure.
My bill's going up.
And then they'll forward, I assume, the balance on the USDA.
Do you know the interest on the, the three hundred thousand, is it?
It's zero, it's all zero at ten years.
So what's your total monthly payment? Did they tell you that?
Hmm, they just told me last week it'd be back on monthly payments, so whatever, a hundred and twenty months divided into four seventy-six, six sixty-five, I don't have my phone with me, that would be our monthly payments, it's around four thousand a month.
Your board and your treasurer and everybody's on board, I mean, everything.
Yes.
And do they have to go to finance, Kristen, like the other ones do? Did Crusoe, somebody else, wasn't it, um, probably or somebody had to go, you had to check with finance, I mean, we've done that on other departments, yeah.
Yes, they, they almost always finance.
That's what I thought.
And they usually solicit rates from multiple banks, kind of like we would do here if we were financing, so, but you can't beat zero percent.
No, you can't. We need some of that, county does, that's great.
Okay, well, it's a government loan, that's why it's confusing, so, it's the federal government running, and that's exactly.
A grant's usually something you don't have to pay back, so it's a little confusing to me.
It's not the grant we're accustomed to.
That, right, yeah. It's the government grant, right, like you said.
Well, zero percent, you know, USDA's been really good, they gave us a low-interest loan on the, the SS building in the health department, and they also gave us a low-interest loan on the animal shelter, so they're great partners, and they really help, they've really helped our community with several projects that were badly needed, and with really, I mean, I'm thinking the interest rate was around a percent or something, or maybe below two, but anyway, okay, just, let's see, anybody got any more questions on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, we approve item one.
Make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, number two, under regular agenda, is approval of a Southwestern North Carolina Home Consortium Physical Year 2022 projects in the amount of $826,000. We have our Southwest Commission Executive Director Russ Harris and Community and Economic Development Director David Francis to talk about that. Just wanna have Russ up there, okay. Welcome, Russ, appreciate you coming out tonight.
Good evening, David just gave me the point that I'm in this alone tonight, I guess. So this is for the Southwestern NC Home Consortium, that is a partnership of the seven western counties and most of the towns within the counties, start bringing HUD home funds into the region. This is the second year that we've come before you for final approval of these projects, and the reason we come before Haywood County is because you all are what's called a participating jurisdiction with HUD, which is fancy language for you, you're kind of the lead on this, so you get final say on it. The consortium board that's made up of all the other governments unanimously approved this on August twenty-sixth, so we're just coming to you all for final approval. So I believe the projects are in front of you in your packets, but these projects total about $826,000. We had about $932,000 available this year, by the time we took out some for administrative costs, we had about $50,000 left over that are not being, it's not being spent this year, but we can roll it over to next year and put it into other projects. So the projects that we're bringing before you, one is with Four Square Community Action. Four Square is requesting $120,000 to assist landlords with upgrades to affordable rental units and to provide rental and utility deposits to tenants. The project will benefit residents in Clay Graham and Swain Counties, Four Square expects to help repair ten homes and assist seventy-five individuals. Landlords that have improvements made to their houses will be required to keep that affordable for two years in exchange for that investment, and the, the improvements to those homes will be kind of prioritized in health and safety, things that are kind of a threat to the people living in those homes. The second project is Givens Estates, they're requesting $350,000 as part of a $25 million project to provide 120 affordable rental units to senior citizens in Jackson County, so that's for folks fifty-five and older. It's a partnership between Givens Estates, Western Carolina University, and Mountain Projects, they plan to purchase the property in December of this year and start construction in 2025, and they'll leverage those funds with some other federal funds through the HUD 202 program and low-income housing tax credits. The third project is here in Jackson County, they're requesting $150,000 to provide deposits and up to three months of rent for those experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Here anticipates being able to serve fifty individuals with those funds. And the final project's Waynesville Housing Authority, they're requesting $206,000 to replace the existing roof on the Waynesville Tower. Project will help preserve sixty-two affordable housing units. Facility was built in 1983, no work's been done on that roof since that time, the project helps to prevent mold and other issues and serves low and very low-income people. Any questions or comments?
I continue to be impressed with the way this program works and the people, the number of people in the region that it's helping. I, I think if I'm correct, that Givens Estate is similar to the apartments that we have here out near Lake Junoska, is that correct? That's owned by Givens as well.
I didn't, oh, maybe, I don't, Givens is definitely active in the region in terms of, my, my own folks live in a Givens, you know, facility over in Asheville, so.
What, what type of units are those, Dave?
The Givens ones here, so they're just, these are just rental units for any senior citizens, so I don't know how many.
Are, are they apartments or houses?
Apartments.
Okay.
So part of that project, there are different parts of that property, and there are gonna, I think, maybe the Mountain Projects, part of that may be single, single home, but the, this part of it's the apartments for the seniors, so there's like three phases to that project. One's gonna be Western, kind of doing just workforce housing, one is Mountain Projects, doing, I think, single-family, and then there's this more senior, senior affordable part of the project that Givens is doing.
I chuckled because he said fifty-five and older would qualify.
Fifty-five percent, hey, we can.
That's talking about all of us.
That's my world. All right, some of us, when I go visit my parents, I'm like, all right, can I get in here at this point?
Exactly.
Because it's kinda nice.
I'm kind of impressed at the roof lasting forty years down here on this building, forty years, that's, that's a real roof.
Yeah. Just remember, Jen, that when you get to be, you get senior discounts when you get coffee and things.
Good, good, I'll remember that, get my card out.
I reminded my brother of that, in return. Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion, we approve item two.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Russ. Item number three, in regular agenda, is to request approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of four 2023 Dodge Charger Pursuit all-wheel-drive vehicles from Alderton, Alderton, Dodge, Chrysler Jeep in the amount of $141,388 for, for the new four safety resource officers per exception to competitive bidding requirements. So Chris, what does that mean?
That means I'm asking for approval to purchase four V6 all-wheel-drive Pursuit rated Chargers for the, the newly hired school resource officers. I'd like to purchase those in, in the exception as a competitive bid under the Sheriff's Association contract in the amount of 141,388. We had, we had one vehicle that we could use, so we're only looking to purchase four. We, we put five new school resource officers in place, so with a little bit of finagling and some help from Chief Trantham, we figured out how to only purchase four Pursuit rated Chargers. I'm asking to purchase those Chargers quickly under the FY23 contract, because Delantus and Dodge is gonna quit making Chargers in the 24 model year. The only thing available at that point is a Pursuit rated SUV or Pursuit rated truck. The, the price for the Durango Pursuit rated is about $10,000 more than the Charger, so I'm trying to get ahead of that to save a little bit of money.
Going forward, will all the, will all the vehicles be SUVs?
SUVs are trucks, it's the only Pursuit rated proposed for 24, unless one of the manufacturers makes a change between now and the production of 24-model year.
Do you wanna comment, Chief, Chief Deputy, no? Okay.
Vehicle, it's tough to buy vehicles anymore, it's amazing.
These funds, these funds coming out of, where are these funds coming from? Part of the four foots and seizures?
No, these are funds that we, that we do have budgeted already, so we're not asking for any additional funds.
Okay, so these, these are budgeted funds.
Yes.
This is part of the overall budget for the school resource officers, I think the county managers supplied you a.
That was included.
A net total for those officers, and this will be included.
So the exception is, we're buying them instead of putting a bid out, because they're available at this particular dealership.
Save $40,000 by getting ahead of it.
Yes, the exception is the competitive bid process, instead of bidding ourselves,
using the Sheriff's Association bid process.
Basically, under the Sheriff's Association, they have already gone out to bid for us, and they pass that savings on to us, we just have to have a resolution saying we're following their contracted presses.
Yes, are these vehicles that can be delivered right away, or they gotta be ordered?
They're, they're supposed to be delivered, no guarantee, by the end of the calendar year, but we, we all know how that's gone the last three or four years, so hopefully we will get those by the end of the calendar year.
Also sounds like we saved some money, because you said we did find one, one patrol car that we could use, is that correct? car that we could use. Is that correct?
We did. We're only purchasing four.
Four.
Pursuit-rated.
Do you know what our resource officers are using at this time for a vehicle? They're just using their personal vehicle or?
No, that, no. Chief might want to speak to that more than I, but I think it's a combination of some old vehicles.
We just keep asking questions.
We have some old Explorers and some old Tauruses that were already slated for replacement. I, I hope that we can-
He's right on that. They're driving cars that we already had in the spare fleet that was actually slated to go up to Gov. Deals to be auctioned out. Most of them that they've got out are 130,000 to 170,000 miles. So they're slated to already be leaving.
High-maintenance car.
Yeah, so we're just using those.
Maintenance costs on them already now, just to keep them going.
Probably wearing out.
We'll piece them together until we get these four, assuming that the board approves this purchase.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three. If there's no more questions.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Matt. Okay, that concludes our, we do not have appointments or a closed session. That concludes our agenda. Is there anything else before the board? Are you entertain a motion? Will you adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe out there.